I'd like to call the meeting to order. I advise everyone in attendance that this meeting is being recorded. Obviously, there is no one else here recording, so I'd ask you all to join me with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under special recognitions, we have Congressman Govern here with us this evening to present us, the district, with a gift, if you'd like to.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Well, thank you very much, and let me first of all thank you all for your service and what you do for the schools and for our kids. I appreciate it very much, and I've seen firsthand the incredible school system you have here in Auburn, and it's something I think everybody should be proud of, and I know you all share in that pride. But I'm here to present to you a flag that will be flown in front of the high school, but also maybe used, I think, ultimately for the Major David Broder memorial. And as a friend of the Broder family, I think, like everybody else in this community, my heart aches for them and for the loss of their son, but I appreciate his service to our country, his bravery, his courage, and I think it's important that we celebrate his life or remember him always. And so I wanted to come here because I was told you needed a flag, and I'm going to present you this flag, and anytime you need another one, as long as I'm here, I'll keep on replacing them for you. So let me give it to Chairperson Laurie.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That's the only reason why I'm here, but I don't know if you have any questions or anything that you need me to answer, but I figured.
Does anyone have any questions? Yes.
The only thing I'd like to say is thank you for coming out of your schedule and stuff that you deal with every day to come here and present the flag. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that, but these things are important, since we all get wrapped up in these big issues and big debates, and we forget sometimes that it's all about people. And so it's, again, I have great admiration for the Broder family and for what their son did, and I wanted to be here in person.
Nice.
I know I have a quick question.
If you would, Congressman Govern, I know you are on hiatus at the moment, but can you just give us a brief update on some initiatives that you're undertaking for the upcoming year?
Yeah, there are a lot of things that I would like to see happen. I'm not sure how many of them will happen. I mean, right now, we are on our district work period, and what I'm hoping that everybody is hearing is what I've been hearing as I've been crisscrossing my district. I just came from North Hampton just this very instant, and what I'm hearing is people saying, "You've got to come together and give and take and get things done." This notion of shutting down the government is a bad idea. This notion of my way or the highway is a bad idea, that politics and life is about compromise. I won't get 100 percent of what I want, and someone else won't get 100 percent of what they want, but we need to get our budget done. I mean, you have to get budgets done here. You need to, you know, make sure that everything is done on time. We ought to do the same thing in Congress, and I know that there are ideological divides that exist, but we need to come together and find a way to move this country forward. And I tell people all the time, you don't have to agree on everything to agree on something. So there's something we agree on, we've got to get done, and then we could fight about the stuff we don't agree on, and let the majority vote and decide which way we're going to go. You know, we're trying to do the reauthorization No Child Left Behind, and it just, you know, the House passed a bill that I'm not sure is going to go anywhere over in the Senate, and we're trying to figure that all out, and obviously, there needs to be some tweaks to No Child Left Behind. But we also need to make sure that the funding for education that the federal government provides is forthcoming. You know, I wish we would do more to help communities deal with special education. We're not living up to our promise on that. In addition to that, there are everything from, you know, teacher training programs to equipment programs to STEM initiatives that we want to support to bricks and mortar that, quite frankly, is an important part of making sure kids get a good education. So we're looking at all these things, but what I'm worried about is going back to Washington after Labor Day and looking at the end of the fiscal year and not getting to a conclusion one way or the other. I think shutting down the government would be a huge mistake, so, again, if my constituents are any indication of what the rest of the country is feeling, they're all saying, you know, "Work things out." That's what you're supposed to do.
I think, kind of piggybacking on what you just said, looking at the federal sequestration in the budget tonight that we're going to be looking at on our agenda is basically $48,000 plus thousand in grants that are going to be affected by that, and hopefully, we'll continue to advocate, like you said, to make sure those funding sources are there.
Yeah, well, sequestration is something I never supported, and even when it passed without my vote, I thought it was such a bad idea, a stupid idea that would never become reality, and I thought I would, I thought nothing would surprise me anymore. It did surprise me that sequestration was allowed to go into place. I think it represents an all-time high in recklessness and stupidity, quite frankly. The notion that you're going to cut across the board every program regardless of its merits, I mean, it doesn't make any sense. And, you know, under this sequestration mentality, if you had a line out of in the budget that was entitled fraud, waste, and abuse, you treat the education budget the same way, and you treat the National Institutes of Health budget the same way, and you treat national defense the same way. Bottom line is, yeah, there's waste in government, let's get rid of the waste. There are some programs that may be duplicative, or, you know, we don't need, we can get rid of them, but there are some programs, quite frankly, that need additional investment, and there are some programs that are already cut to the bone. And, you know, everybody seems to be saying that education is the most important issue facing our country, you know, our economy's future relies on a well-educated workforce. You've got to get it right. Well, if we really mean what we say, then we need to make sure that we don't subject, you know, the limited amounts of federal assistance you get, we've got to make sure that it doesn't get subjected to sequestration, and we need to figure out ways to help provide you additional resources, quite frankly, to be able to do your job. I mean, look, there are federal mandates that you have to follow that you don't get reimbursed for. You have your state mandates as well. You've got all kinds of mandates that you're trying to comply with. The notion that we're going to pass down mandates and then take away your funding is just ludicrous, so, I agree with you on the sequestration stuff, and I, you know, and what I've been asking the Speaker of the House to do is to allow there to be a day where people can bring their alternatives to sequestration up for a vote. Let the majority of the House decide how we get out of this. And I just would say that there are some people, quite frankly, who think sequestration is a good thing. They think that, you know, this is a way to cut government, and the more we can cut government, the better. You know, I don't agree with that philosophy, but I understand it. I think it's a dangerous philosophy. I think we need, we don't need excessive government, but we need government, we need enough government to be able to, you know, meet the common good, and that includes education. So, you know, I hear you loud and clear, we're trying very hard. I'm hoping that rather than a government shutdown, we end up finding a solution to sequestration, maybe find some of the cuts in other places in the budget that really deserve more cuts, protect the good things, and come up with a budget deal so that we can keep the government running, and so that you can plan. I mean, if the government were to shut down, or even with the sequestration, you don't know what you're going to expect from us next year. It's hard for you to plan based on your local budget, but if you can't count on this grant or that grant, or if you think you might even get cut more in some, in a federal program, that makes it very difficult for cities and towns, so I hear you. We're going to, you know, I'm doing my part. I'm willing to give even more than I'd like to give to avoid a catastrophic government shutdown.
I'd like to thank you for your presenting the flag to us tonight and also for what you're doing for us in our district.
Well, I want to thank you for your service. I know, you know, you're here every day, so you hear everything, the good and the bad about what's going on here, and I appreciate your service, and look, if anything I can do to be helpful in Washington, let me know, and it was an honor for me to come and be able to present you this flag, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
That was nice.
That was wonderful.
So we will now, obviously, we have no citizens' concerns or comments. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular session minutes for July 11, 2012.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, here's the vote. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item actually kind of dovetails into what Congressman was just speaking about, maximizing dollars wherever we can and redirecting it to students. So we have an opportunity. I met recently with Mr. Gray, Mr. Campbell, and Ms. Flynn, who's the Special Education Secretary. If you'll recall, our Medicaid reimbursement a few short years ago was $160,000. In these past couple of years, it's gone $112,000, and that really is due to a shift in federal eligibility requirements. As part of our meeting to try and see if there are ways to capitalize on potential more reimbursements, we looked to the 240 grant, which I noted later on, actually has seen a reduction of almost $20,000 due to the federal sequestration. So if, with your approval, what we'd like to do when we write the grant for fiscal '14 is to, rather than pay for some out-of-district tuitions, which are for special education students that we can't appropriately provide an education for in district, instead of putting that in the 240 grant, we'd shift that to the operating budget. We'd then take an identical amount from the operating, which is the transportation to transport them, and pay that out of the federal grant. The reason is, transportation is not eligible for Medicaid reimbursement. Tuitions for students is eligible. Because the tuitions were paid out of a federal grant, and Medicaid is a federal program, you can't take from two federal programs. So it really is just shifting dollars. There's net zero impact to the budget. It's just will be how we write the grant, and I'm also looking for the special supplies as well, because we can get some reimbursement for those. So my recommendation here, as noted, is for you to approve the transfer, and we've actually designated an amount. Mr. Campbell met with Mr. Gray and designated an amount, and with your approval, we'll write the grant as such.
entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of $208,7,289 in special education transportation into the 240 grant with that same value, and tuition's now being paid from the operating budget.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Here's the vote.
Make a motion to approve the transfer of $12,500 in special education transportation into the 240 grant with that same value, and special education supplies now being paid from the operating budget.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And Ms. Scobie.
Thank you for that. The next item, as you know, I've been sharing with you over the past couple of years, or 18 months at least, the new requirement that will go into effect July 1st, that we're going to need to continue to provide an education unless, for students, it has to be a very serious safety-related one. As I do each year, I review the disciplinary reports through all of our schools, and in my discussions with the high school's administration, students were being put on out-of-school suspension far more than I believe they should have, and they agreed, for non-threatening, for non-safety-related issues. There are times when out-of-school suspension is absolutely appropriate, but the problem is, we do not have a designated place where students can go, staying in school and continuing to be educated. So it's my recommendation that you approve the hiring of an in-school suspension person, and enclosed is a memo from Mr. Handfield, which actually addresses this issue. It actually would help put us into compliance with Chapter 222 of the Acts of 2012, which does not go into effect until July 1st of '14, but would allow our students to continue to do their work with appropriate supervision, because not all students who go home on in school suspension are doing their work, are keeping up with their studies, and then come back to school and are further behind. So this amount would be a total of, as noted in here, a little over $15,000, and we would be looking for someone who was a certified teacher to do that, and just because of the job market, I'm confident we could find someone to do so. So it is my recommendation you approve this.
Ask a question. So it's so that students don't have to be, have an out-of-school suspension? They would actually come in to school that day and?
Correct. So what they would do is they would be placed into a particular room with the in-school suspension teacher. They would have work that would have been retrieved from their classes and would be expected to do it. They would not be integrating with the other student body during the school day, and for any day when, if there were no students on in-school suspension, we would utilize that person as our first sub and not bring in a new person. So the person would always be doing something.
So what do they do about lunch?
Actually, what we had talked about is, they would go prior to, or someone would go and retrieve the lunch and bring it back to that room, so that way they're not in...
So there's no contact with the students at all?
No contact with other students. I mean, it's important that it be a punishment, but, so we want it to be a punishment, but have education continue at the same time. Sending them home, it may seem like a punishment. It may not always be for students who are home if someone's not there supervising them, and we have very little to any control over them actually getting their work done.
And if I may, how do they get to, how do they get to school?
That would still be part of the regular transportation, whether they drive or on the bus, and these would be for issues that were non-safety-related ones. So, I mean, if there's an extreme case, we would still exercise out-of-school suspensions.
So there's no excuse that they wouldn't be able to get there?
Correct. Correct.
Do you entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Yes.
For the chair, do you believe that we'll be able to find a suitable candidate for that amount of money?
I do, actually.
I know you, you said, with the job market being what it is, but do you think we'd find a more experienced candidate? I know we're not, in most cases, we're not going to be dealing with the best of the best in our students, and I've found over the years that someone with more experience with that type of student usually seeks a little bit more money.
Sure. I would agree with you, Mr. Scobie, that some more funding may allow us to be a bit more selective in the person that we hire, but I know that in the different jobs that we have posted this year, we get hundreds of applications, and, I mean, the other way to look at it is, it is an opportunity for someone to get their foot in the door and potentially prove themselves when an additional opening comes up, but, I mean, if you're proposing, giving me some latitude with funding, that would be great.
Not exactly. I was just trying to pick your brain and see how you felt about it.
Yeah. The administration of the high school is confident that they could find someone to do it for that.
At the same time, yeah, there may only be two students in there.
Right.
On any particular day.
Right. I would anticipate that would be more the case, and there will be some days when there are not any, and they'd be out subbing, and that's actually at our beyond 30-day subrate that they would receive.
And my only other concern, I think it kind of follows up on what Liz was talking about, and I would never question the way you or Casey conduct business, but let's say if it was, if there was a physical assault, and I would just be afraid that the other student would have to see that individual the very next day.
Sure.
And I believe that it would be best if that wasn't the case.
Sure. And truly, it would be, you know, as I said, there are some incidents in which students engage that deserve an out-of-school suspension, so we would be very cautious in making that determination.
I would think with an assault, something like that, that'd be more of a...
Correct. Being out of school, yeah.
An out-of-school thing than an in-school. Just saying, it's just the little things that you're going to do in school, not something like an assault outside.
Correct. And we're fortunate to have School Resource Officer Brian Kennedy, who works throughout the district, but concentrates a lot of his time at the high school, and, you know, he has, his advice is always, "Well, well-considered, too."
Because that could be very interesting if there were two assailants, and there was a fistfight, and then they met the very next morning.
No, we would not have that.
And now our brand-new $85 a-day teacher has to take care of that problem.
I'm happy to report, we have so few physical assaults, which speaks to our students and the administration, but I hear your point. I do.
Excellent. Thank you.
Can I ask, what constitutes an out-of-school suspension if it's not a threatening situation?
Currently, what could happen is, because it's progressive, so if a student misses a detention, or, you know, talks back in class and gets a detention, doesn't go to it, is assigned to Saturday detention, does not go to that, eventually, it adds up, and now they get an out-of-school suspension. So it becomes this snowball effect, and what was apparent was, it was a way to get a vacation day.
Exactly.
You know? So that's really what prompted the initial discussion around it.
And one more thing, if what Mr. Scobie is saying, and you can't find somebody that you feel is truly suitable...
Yep.
Then I would hope that you would come back to us and let us know that, and...
I will.
We would, we would help you out in that way.
Great. Thank you very much.
Just through the chair, I am a huge proponent of this, because this has always been a thorn in my side, was out-of-school suspensions. I mean, I understand physical assaults and things like that, but that was one of my big pet peeves, was giving these kids a day off, because, you know what? Everybody's parents are working now, and so...
Right.
These kids were just sleeping in and watching TV and really weren't, I don't think, being punished when you're in an out-of-school suspension. So I support this wholeheartedly, and would like to also echo what Mr. Scobie and Mrs. Grivens said, that if you feel that, you know, this $15,000 isn't going to get us what we need, I would also like for you to come back and have a serious discussion about that, if we could.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's the vote.
The next item, Mr. Imzy, as chairperson of the school building committee, he works for a corporation who may be interested in submitting an application for the construction manager at risk. This is not a department in which he works, but in being cautious, and I think this is a good idea, he spoke to the state ethics and has filled out this disclosure form, which simply needs to be formally accepted by the school committee, and I would then provide a copy to Ellen Gavory at the town hall. And it is my recommendation you accept this.
Make a motion to formally accept Form 191B, the state ethics disclosure form, granting Mr. Laurie, chairperson, permission to sign it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, here's the vote.
The next item, I just wanted to make you aware, actually, the next several items. I've been asked by the Secretary of Education, Dr. Matt Malone, to serve as a member of the statewide elementary literacy expert panel. I spoke to the woman from the secretary's office, and I understand there'll be nine of us on this panel. We'll be meeting four times each year, and I did include the Act, which is the Act of 2012, Chapter 287, regarding third-grade reading proficiency. So I'm excited to serve in this capacity, and just wanted to make you aware of that.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
I just want to congratulate you for that. It's really great when, you know, our superintendent is out there doing something like this, and it's representing Auburn, and so, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
If I may, through the chair as well, Dr. Brunel, were you sought out for this?
Actually, Senator Moore, Senator Michael Moore, spoke to me probably, I think it was last fall at some point, and asked if I had any interest in this, and so I put together a letter, and he recommended, and the secretary then called and asked me to be part of it. Actually, I don't know if I shared this with you, but on, at the end of June, Secretary of Education, I believe I did, was out at the high school with the whole STEM, the Innovation Grant, and Auburn Middle School was featured, and I got an opportunity to speak, and so, so no, that's, it was nice.
Well, congratulations, I again, I would also like to congratulate you. That is wonderful. Good.
Thanks. Just to give you an update, the edival team continues their work. We met on July 25th. We'll meet again next week on the 14th, and we continue to believe that we are in good shape with this. We've had tremendous cooperation with the teachers' union, with the nurses' union, the administrators have been great, and I also want to make you aware that the, and I'm not sure how it will be reported, but as part of this, the Board of Education's acceptance moving to this, is there will be publication of how teachers scored by district in the four categories. So there was exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. My feeling, and we agreed on this as a leadership team, this was a partial-year implementation. We went into this with the teachers saying, "We are going to work together on this. The goal is for us to enhance the quality and number of conversations we have around teaching and learning." It was not intended to be a gotcha for any teacher, so you will see that our teachers scored in the proficient category, which is where I think for a, really a pilot or a partial-year implementation, and I expect that next year, we will see some into the exemplary, there will be some in needs improvement, and I'd be doubtful if they're running unsatisfactory. We have dedicated teachers, but it's really a whole mind shift where needs improvement is not really a bad rating, it just says that you need to do some work in an area, and that's a very different thing. So I'm not sure how it will be reported, but just wanted to make you aware of that. So following with this, in the coming weeks, I'm going to start to work on my self-assessment and my goals again, so if there are any suggestions you have, whether it's tonight or on September 4th, I would welcome them. If there are any areas which you'd really like to see me focus, I would certainly be happy to do that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Because of what you have in here in the, in your superintendent memo, you're talking about the DESI document and whether or not we want to continue using that.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we have to use the DESI.
We have to use that one, yes.
But the self-isup, the evaluation that we, as the committee, put together.
Correct.
I have to tell you, I was not a big proponent of that DESI evaluation. I felt as though there were many areas in which I felt I was not really knowledgeable enough in the everyday workings of what you do to evaluate what you wanted, and in some situations, I had to sort of count on what you were telling us was going on in these certain situations. In areas that I really felt, and I don't know how the other committee members feel, but in areas that I felt, I would never have known certain things that were going on. And so I feel that our tool, to me, is a better way of us letting you know how we feel you're doing and giving you feedback. So with that said, I would be curious to know which documents you got the most information from.
You know, I think, and I agree with your point about the DESI documents, they certainly don't provide the specificity in terms of the different areas of my roles and responsibilities. So I think probably, looking back when I reread them, I mean, I tried to look at them in their totality.
You don't have to answer the question tonight, man.
Yeah, I think it was all, they were all pieces of it, you know?
Yeah.
So I don't have a problem with the committee continuing to use the document that we created here, quite honestly, together. The DESI one is not an option that we've got to continue with.
Right.
So it's really up to you, and I just thought it would be a discussion for you to decide early on, as opposed to waiting.
And I wasn't here for the evaluation when Chairman Laurie was saying it for the public. There were, there were things that, the highest one, to me, was not as good as the second-highest one.
Right.
So it was really, it was very difficult.
The rubric, right.
I have to say, and so, one thing to think about for the whole committee, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I, I felt like our evaluation maybe was a little bit easier for us to give you feedback on.
Through the chair. Yes.
Liz, I totally agree, and it's the same thing, unfortunately, with the teacher evaluation. It would be better if we could, if we could kind of branch out on our own and, in this case, we already have a document. If we could improve that one, improve that tool, it would be better, because there were some situations where I had to try to relate something from that instrument to my dealings with Dr. Brunel, you know, on a bi-weekly basis.
Right.
And you just try to fit in those things, and some of them still didn't make sense. It's just the way it is, so if we could hold on to our document, I agree, that would be best, and maybe we can build on that in the next couple of years.
I agree.
I agree, too.
And I believe, I believe I made a comment concerning that at that meeting where Jeff was reading out the evaluation results. was reading out the evaluation results. And I should take a good look at the commentary that we made, because I really think that was our best source.
So we will keep it. There's no vote needed, because we've already got it in place. That's perfect. Few other items, the opening day activities. Dr. Laze has put together. We have quality days planned with our staff in a number of different areas. They will welcome them in, and it's coming very quickly. The MIMZI Summer Institute, I had the pleasure of attending that down at Bridgewater State last Tuesday. And two of our teachers were there, Karen Ballway for AP Chemistry and Hans DeClerc for AP Statistics. But we also had a number of other teachers who attended pre-AP, AP trainings this summer, as well as people who were working. And Dr. Laze will provide an update on curriculum work, different training materials, looking at curriculum. So a tremendous amount of time and energy spent throughout the summer, which is what happens every year. And actually, at the September 4th meeting, representatives from MIMZI will be coming to actually talk about the tremendous job that Auburn High School students did, and teachers. And not only, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we had less than a hundred taking AP. Last year, we had two hundred. Next year, we have over four hundred students registered for those courses. And we had a lot of qualifying scores. So, great news. The MAS Summer Executive Institute, just wanted to thank you for supporting my attendance there. The keynote speaker, Doris Kearns-Goodwin, was absolutely amazing to hear her talk about. She called them her guys, President Lincoln, FDR, and President Truman as well. So it was really excellent, and really focused a lot on Etavale. And really, as I said earlier, we're in very good shape with that. Coming up in a couple of weeks, we've got our new teacher orientation on the 20th. We'll also be doing a secretary's training that day. And for our new teachers, we actually started this last year for the first time. We take them on a yellow school bus tour around the district. So that way, they get to see the other schools. Because oftentimes, new teachers, when they come to a district, they're so engrossed in the work that they do with their colleagues in their school, they don't even see where Mary D. Pachachog, the high school, middle school, and Brimmar is. So it'll be fun. Mr. Gray's looking forward to it, I'm sure. A cupola update I just wanted to share with you. We did, Mr. Fahy and I attended recently a meeting with Mary Stepansky and Sari Bidix, along with Julie Jacobson, Bill Hoyle, and Auntie Pelletier. As you know, you gave approval to the Auburn Historical Commission to place the cupola from the old high school on the grounds, with the understanding that there would be no financial responsibility. So just wanted to keep you apprised of that. And as we always do, it's a real collaborative effort in trying to help in any way we can without causing finances. Congressman McGovern mentioned the Major David Burdor Square. Work is underway there. If you've been to the back of the high school, Mr. Fahy is working closely with that team. And they remain optimistic that they're on schedule and will be done in August, which is great. And then finally, the District Curriculum Accommodation Plan, the D cap, that we're required to have, is here for your review. And it is my recommendation that you approve it. And I thank Dr. Laze for putting it together.
You want us to make a motion to approve that?
Yes, I failed to put that in there.
Okay. I'll make the motion to accept the District Curriculum Accommodation Plan as written.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now move on to unfinished business.
Great. I brought to you at the July 10th meeting, we've had a number of registrations this summer. We do it out of central office during the summer weeks. And the fourth-grade class sizes at Pachachog, and this was, that it happened the ten days prior to our July 10th meeting, are now at ninety-five, with two ELA, English Language Arts classrooms at twenty-five. That has not shifted. We did not lose any students. So it is my recommendation that we hire. I need to work with Mrs. Kozic on this. She just happily was enjoying some family vacation time, but up to two instructional assistants to reduce that adult-to-student ratio.
Yes?
I don't, I wasn't here at the July 10th meeting, so could you tell me how many students then that's going to be per classroom?
It would be, there were twenty-five in two, and twenty, actually, it would be twenty-five in three, and twenty-four in the fourth.
I'll make the motion to approve the hiring of up to two instructional assistants for Pachachog Schools, grade four, to reduce the adult-to-student ratio.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
I have something. The only thing that worries me, I know you have to do this now, the only thing that worries me is if those go up above the twenty-five. That's the only thing that worries me. I'm assuming that at this point in the summer, you're not, you're not foreseeing that that's going to happen?
I'm not at this point. It's impossible to predict if some new families will move in. But it has, since those, that influx of ten, it has remained steady. So I don't anticipate that it's likely to change at this point. And the other issue is, in terms of spacing, we don't have space to add an additional classroom. And what this will do is allow what would have been a twenty-five-student classroom to now have two, at least adults in there supporting them.
And your instructional assistants will have, they will be trained as teachers? Or they just-
We actually look for them, and again, we've been very fortunate that we're able to hire lots of people who have their teacher certification.
Okay.
Yeah. That's always our goal, is to find those that do. At the very minimum, they have to be highly qualified by NCLB, which means the equivalent of two years of college as well.
I will, I will approve this. However, I would strongly suggest that whoever you hire does have a certification in education, because I feel as though just having an extra body in there is really not enough when you have those five numbers, but-
No, I agree. And that's always our goal to do it. And I will say, we've, we continue to be very fortunate to have a cadre of really high-quality assistants who come in and do support. Yeah.
Joyce, did you have a question?
Actually, I have a new question. Liz can ask my other questions. Do we take advantage of any student teachers in the district?
We do. We do. We regularly have them. Our guidance department always has them. It's been some time since we've had any. I'm trying to think back. In our elementary schools, we have an awful lot of students who come in for their pre-practicum hours. But off the top of my head, I can't think of one recently. But that's another avenue to look at, too.
Yeah, I think that would be worth exploring, even if it was only for that grade level.
Sure.
Yeah.
And Liz, what I'll say is, from talking to some people, we are getting two, three-hundred applications for our open teaching positions. So we are getting college-educated certified people as assistants because they're looking for a job. So we've been fortunate to, in the district, to actually have certified groupie teachers as instructional assistants. Question, please?
Do they vote?
Oh, yes, we have to vote. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have the minute take for tonight, too. Budgeting priorities I have on the air again. And Mr. Gray was working on our budgeting timeline today, so that will be kicking off very soon, very soon. Mr. Laurie had mentioned this, the federal sequestration, the impact of that, which totals over forty-eight thousand dollars. We did not yet, at the time of this publication, and nor today, have our Title II-A money. But fortunately, we budgeted anticipating that. If you remember, we started with a fifty percent reduction, and then backed it off. So it would be ideal if these funds came in, because we cannot eliminate the support in these programs. Two-forty, for example, is for our special needs students. Regardless of whether we get it from a grant or the operating budget, we have a legal obligation to provide the education for them. So-
I was glad to hear.
Absolutely, absolutely. The next item, I included for you a memo from Mr. Bouvier regarding the park assessments. And in response to the letter that was sent to Senator Michael Moore's office from the committee, there is the response that was received there. So Mr. Bouvier's memo, as you read through it, he talks about the security requirements, the bandwidth requirements. One of the challenges is, and it's noted in his first paragraph, is that the minimum specifications will not be finalized until October of 2013. So based on the expectations as we believe them to currently be, Mr. Bouvier, based on our CIP purchases, believes that we may be in good shape, but there are still numerous unknowns in this. So I'll continue to keep you apprised on it. It is a topic of discussion. It was at the Executive Institute this summer. Among superintendents, Auburn is in far better shape than many communities to do this. And I think you join me in the concern, obviously, our first concern is for our students here, but there's a greater concern for students who are going to be disadvantaged by not having the ability to take this in a computerized thing. So we almost expected to hear that there may be a potential delay in this, but it was not forthcoming, at least this summer. So I'll keep you updated. The school, okay, School Building Committee, the Construction Manager at Risk, that Pre-Qualification Subcommittee has met, and we look forward to bringing back, that group is actually going to review through, it was actually posted in the legal notices yesterday. They will do the first screening and bring forward to the SBC the top three candidates. And it'll be the SBC's decision to pick the top candidate as, who will serve as the CM at Risk on the Middle School Project. And then finally, the Press Box is inching ever nearer completion. Friday, September 6th, at seven o'clock, it's our first home game against Chickaby Comprehensive High. And we are planning a brief dedication ceremony. Undetermined at this point whether it be pre-game or during halftime, all of you will certainly be invited. So just to make you aware.
Can we comment on having that Chickaby?
Yes.
That's who we, we're going that far out to find people to-
Well, this, actually, that was due to MIAA did a whole reorganization of the different groups or leagues that they play in. And so Chickaby actually, yeah, it's making the trek out here, yeah. So we've been switched up with a lot. That's a new one. And then the upcoming events noted, as always.
Does anyone else have anything on the new business? Briefly, I'll just mention that, and I'll probably bring it up on the meeting on the 4th, the Relay for Light at Lemaski Park is September 6th and 7th coming up. It'll welcome you in the public to come join us, a great community event. We can now move on to the business and financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first order of business you have before you is the fiscal year thirteen budget transfers for omnibus approvals. As I become acclimated into a municipal school system, there are some things that are a little different from a regional school system, and this is one of them. So in concert with business staff, we sat down and went through the fiscal year thirteen budget, and I'm asking your approval for these budget transfers in order to financially, trying to think of the correct terminology to make sure you understand that I know what I'm doing.
Yeah.
To make sure they're financially in the right positions for that year-end fiscal year thirteen report. So you have to answer any questions anybody has.
I make a motion to approve the transfers recommended by the business office.
A second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Elizabeth?
Thank you very much. The next document you have before you is our first run of the 2014 year-to-date budget as of August 1st, 2013. As you're probably aware, first budget run of any school year, is one of which has little activity, other than encumbrances for purchases that were made at the beginning of the fiscal year, as well as accounting for salaries for certain administrators and different personnel throughout the school district that we account for through the accounting process to beginning of July 1st. So this report is for your review. And once again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Are there any questions?
And then the last document you have before you is the operating budget fiscal year thirteen final numbers. Once again, in order to account for any expenditures that occurred after the close of the fiscal year, these are identifiable expenses that we will be providing to our town account in order to create the fiscal year thirteen account. And this represents the available budget as of the end of July, and those expenses associated with it bringing us down to our total. And then a calculation of our teacher salary carryover number, and with the grand total for the final numbers.
Are there any questions? There being none, we do not have any policies personnel, but we do have to go into executive session. So I would entertain a motion, and then a roll call vote.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session per MGL Chapter 30, Section 21-3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and collective bargaining.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Mrs. Griffins?
Yes.
Mrs. Gabory?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
And Mr. Laurie?
Yes.
Great.
Good night, everyone.